Okay, we'll get the township of Howell planning board meeting for Thursday, March 1st, 2018 started. Eileen, could we have the opening statement, please?
Yes, you may. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 19th, 2018, copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Troughtown News. Second, on January 19th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 19th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
We have roll call.
Former Mayor Gatto.
Present.
Mr. Husser.
Here.
Chief Kudrick.
Present.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Boyle.
Present.
Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro has been excused. Mayor Berger has been excused. Chairman Nash has been excused. And Vice Chairman Tannenhaus?
Here.
Thank you. You have a forum.
Thank you.
Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those serving abroad.
Chief?
(Inaudible).
Do we remain standing a moment? Just remember, one of our planning board members, 10 years ago, he left the planning board, which was a very effective member. He just passed away this week, Jim Burgess.
Eileen, do we have any minutes to approve?
We have no minutes to approve.
Do we have any vouchers?
We have no vouchers.
Do we have any correspondence?
That we do have.
Okay.
I have a letter from Todd Cohen regarding the application of Joseph Wilhelm, case SP They had to get new plans in, which of course didn't make it in time, but he also had a conflict, so he asked if this matter could please be carried to the meeting of March 15th, 2018, without further notice to the public. And I told him that date was fine, so we can carry that.
We have any other correspondence?
Yeah, do we want to carry that first?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's...
Okay, the application, Wilhelm, a case number SP 1035 Joseph Wilhelm, preliminary and final major site plan, bulk variance Woodlands Management, involving the property located at 2 Clayton Road, Block 78.10, Lot 34.01, is being carried on notice to this board's meeting, March 15th, 7:00 PM, in this room. There will be no further mailed or newspaper notice. So that application is carried.
Thank you. I also emailed, well, first of all, the members got a lot of emails from the clerk's office and myself regarding various ordinances for the surrounding towns, but we have two ordinances of our own that the council's going to introduce on Tuesday, March 6th. We can't vote that they're consistent or inconsistent with the master plan tonight, but if anybody has read them and has any comments, we can get them to the council before next week. And those are ordinance number 0 or 018-2, which amends Chapter 188, Article 1, Section 3, the schedule of bulk and dimensional requirements, residential zones of the revised general ordinances of the Township of Howell. And basically, that changes the lot coverage for impervious for the ARE 1 zone from 15% to 30%, and building coverage for principal and accessory structures from 12% to 15%. The other ordinance is 018-3, and that amends Chapter 188, Article 6, Section 188-39, entitled "Abandonment of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Howell." And that goes into talk about a non-conforming use and when it is considered to be abandoned. So if anybody has any comments, we can discuss them.
Does anybody have any comments? Do we want our professionals to give any summary of those ordinances at all?
Okay, then we have to vote on them at next meeting, okay? And the only other thing, I had sent everybody an email about the training. I still haven't heard from a few members, so if you can either email me and let me know if you're going to be attending on April 21st, so I can register you, or if you need another date, those dates will also included in that email.
Agreed.
And that's it for correspondence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have resolutions. Case number SP-1041, Smith Family Properties. Eligible voters are former Mayor Gatto, Mr. Hazar, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Russo, myself, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Boyle. We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
That was Mr. Schneider's second?
No, Mr. Boyle.
I'm sorry.
We're often confused.
I can't hear sometimes over here.
It's okay.
Okay, former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Motion memorialized, thank you.
Okay, review of submission waivers. We have case number SD-2978, Edward and Lords McNamhe.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Lawrence Trail appearing for the applicant. I have someone much more intelligent than I am. It's our engineer tonight prepared to address any questions that may have in regards to the submission waivers.
I'd like to swear in Laura Newman, so she can testify as to this mission. Laura, do you swear affirm that the testimony provided to the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have a report dated February 12th, 2018, in which case the submission waivers are enumerated in item four. There are six waivers that have been requested, and because this is an application for preliminary, they're actually coming in for the preliminary, not final at this time, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete. I would note it's a permitted use. One of the things is architecturals. We don't usually get architecturals with a single-family residential development. In addition, traffic report, I'm sure they'll testify to, but it is a permitted use within the zone. And then, as it relates to descriptions and flood hazard areas, they do have that information provided, but obviously, legal descriptions wouldn't be provided until the time of the filing of the map. Health Department, they're obviously required to make that application for a septic system, but again, because it's preliminary, I take no exception to that. And then, just, there's a waiver as it relates to grading information for the roadway. Again, generally, that information is provided, but pending a final design, it's, you know, not complete for final.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, entertain a motion?
I move to approve.
Mr. Schneider, approve.
I'll second.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening, everybody.
Have a good night. Okay.
Let's do this.
The one and only application for tonight is case number SP-1027, 41 Randolph LLC, preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters are former Mayor Gatto, Chief Kudrick, myself, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Schneider, and Mr. Seaman.
Good evening, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary G. Kobe Alfieri and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. The board accepted jurisdiction at the last hearing. Also, at the last hearing, Mr. Ward provided testimony just generally describing the site and the proposed development of the site. And since that time, he submitted a revised plan. And your engineer did a review dated February 28th of that revised plan. We also indicated at the last hearing, and if you recall, we actually started this hearing last year, and we had agreed that we were going to start from scratch and not consider any testimony that was offered at the hearing that took place long before the interpretation issue that was addressed by the zoning board. Having said that, Mr. Ward was sworn in and qualified at the last meeting. I don't know if you want to re-swear.
Mr. Ward, do you recognize that you were previously sworn, and that swearing carries over to this evening's hearing?
I do.
And, Mr. Ward, you were also qualified as both a planner and engineer.
That's correct.
And you still have those licenses, I assume?
I do, still active.
So, could you, first, you have how many exhibits?
I have a color rendering of the site. This will be new, this has to be entered, and then, I have A15, which was previously entered at the very first meeting in February.
Okay, so we're up to A27?
Yes.
Would you identify what A27 is, Mr. Ward?
Sure, it's a colorized site plan showing the most recent submitted improvements. That's pretty much it. Prepared as of today.
All right, would you orient the board as to where this property is located, and describe what's proposed as part of this application?
Sure, so the subject property is 41 Randolph Road, Block 38, Lot 4. We are just east of the Randolph Road and 547T intersection. We have just over 12 acres of property, and we're in the SED zone, which is the industrial zone of the township. There's a few uniques about the property that I just wanted to describe to the board. And it really is environmental and with JCPN, so I'm just going to move the mic so I can stand up.
You want the other mic?
That's easier, yeah, it might be easier, so I should have thought of that. Okay, so now, orienting the board to A27, so the left side of the page here is the north end, and as you can see here, there's a large expansive green space in the proposed condition, and there's a few reasons for that. We're heavily constrained environmentally. We have Dix Brook, which is a Category 1 waterway on the north side of our property. And then, you could see where there's a line cutting across north to south. There's actually a 200-foot JCPN right-of-way through our property as well, where there's two sets of overhead high-tension towers. Within the north end of the property, we have the 300-foot riparian zone associated with the creek, so we can't touch that. We also have the 100-foot township stream corridor, and we also have freshwater wetlands down there. The freshwater wetlands have a 50-foot transition area, and like I said, the stream corridor is 100 feet for the township. The most restrictive of the three environmental constraints is the riparian zone, and that comes out to just about the edge of the proposed parking lot. You can see where the tree line is proposed to be trimmed down to. In accordance with the ordinance, the rear yard setback for the development and any other developments is measured to the edge of the riparian zone or any other environmental buffer. So, the applicant is before the board tonight, seeking to construct a flex space facility at the property with associated parking and circulation. Currently, the property is developed with a single-family dwelling and two accessory structures. They're more or less hen houses. Much of the site outside of that JCPN right-of-way is lightly wooded. The JCPN areas contain high grasses and no trees. They generally maintain it, and they don't like high vegetation. There's one existing lattice tower and one newer monopole supporting high-tension wires within the proposed area of work. As stated previously, Dix Brook and its associated constraints occupy the back half of the property. To date, the applicant has obtained freshwater wetlands, LOI, letter of interpretation, and a flood hazard area verification from the DEP. Both permits are current and valid, confirming the limits of the constraints I just mentioned to you. So, as you can tell, much of the site is constrained and limits the applicant with the usable lot area for construction of buildings. After considering all site constraints, including the proposed municipal right-of-way dedication and the zoning setbacks, we're left with under three acres of developable area, where we started with just over 12. All improvements on-site today, excluding any JCPN infrastructure, is proposed to be removed. So what we're proposing is a 119,748 square feet flex space building with individual tenant units that extend the full width of the building. So when I describe full width, I'm pointing at A27 again, from west to east, so the west side of the building will be the man door entrance, where you have glass windows and the like, and on the east side will be the overhead doors. So the full tenant bays will be west to east. We'll have dedicated office areas, restrooms, and break rooms proposed on the west side of the building near the main entrances. These entrances are for more employees and customers, if applicable. The building design has evolved over time since the first submission to reasonably fit within the township's architectural standards and comments from JCPN. So, most recently, eight feet was trimmed off the east side of the building as a request from JCPN to stay 10 feet off their right-of-way. Now, we don't have to do that, but that was a request for the safe erection of the building and avoiding any conflicts with their high-tension towers. So we obliged, and the applicant was happy to keep them happy. The roof line was adjusted. A parapet and facade walls were added on the Randolph roadside to give the appearance of roofline offsets, which the ordinance requires. For a warehouse-type structure, it's not functional to provide roofline offsets, so the proposed design reasonably achieves the intent of this specific architectural standard in the ordinance. Polasters are proposed on all facades except the loading bay side to break them up visually. These changes were integrated based on comments by the board engineer, and were carefully considered by the applicant. We're proposing one ground-mounted sign towards the southwest corner of the building along Randolph Road that'll be fully conforming to the ordinance, which will indicate the site address and tenants. One other item to mention, on the north side of the building, some of the units will be limited with their vehicle size due to the JCPN improvement. So we have this grassed area where the current towers are. There are a series of doors back here for these units, which will have limited vehicle size maneuvering. So the tractor trailers and that like won't be able to access this, these will be restricted for that. We're talking about the SU-30 box truck type of vehicles that will be able to service those bays.
How are you proposing to make sure that those are limited? What's being put in place to limit?
There are two things. One is, assuming an approval is granted, the resolution can state specifically that that limitation exists, that we do have to record or file that resolution with the Monmouth County Clerk's Office. And number two, as a condition of approval, we would agree to impose that condition in any leases that are entered into for those specific units.
Would that be a deed restriction of some sort?
Well, we could do that as well. But the resolution will be recorded, but we have no objection to a deed restriction either.
Thank you.
From the original plans, what changed about that high-tension?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I was going to get to that a little later, but that's a good question to hit now. So, the previous iteration, the immediate previous iteration, we were seeking one additional design waiver, and that was a 22-foot wide driveway width, and that was at a, really, I call it a choke point between the two towers. So we had the driveway going right between here. Now, and as we've been, we've been in touch with JCPN from day one, just trying to come up with the solution that works best for them while still trying to achieve what our development goals are, we found a way to eliminate that design waiver, which satisfies the Fire Bureau, especially where we're coming around the towers. Now, it works, drainage is not impacted, and JCPN has actually now more distance from their edge of towers to any traveled way on our property. So that's really the crux of the change. With that change, we lost some parking spaces, but, as I'll get to in a moment, we are, we have a sufficient amount of parking spaces for an office and warehouse type use.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Ward, you had mentioned, which of the bays are going to be restricted to not tractor trailers, but more of the box trucks? Can you identify those?
Sure.
And you may want to do it by linear feet, because it might be one tenant, and it could be two or three tenants, right?
Yeah, and you know what I'll do is...
If you don't mind, because we don't have a tenant.
If I just take one moment just to measure that, because that is the fair way of doing it. No question. Okay, so, the bays that, within 200 feet of the rear building line, and it really comes out to about 200 feet on the button.
Do we want to say the northeast corner?
From the northeast corner, moving south along that building face. From that northeast corner, that fifth stairwell along that wall is really our line of whether it works or not for truck circulation, for the larger trucks. So, another item that came up early on when we initially submitted was conformance with the master plan and Randolph Road improvements. So, the site itself has changed over time. What we're proposing here is a 30-foot dedication along our frontage to conform with the master plan. Randolph Road is, per the master plan, is to be 60 feet wide for the right-of-way. What the master plan further states is that we're to dedicate whatever the deficit is, if that's the correct word, and then also widen the road itself and add a shoulder. So we're proposing that here. We're proposing to curb the entire frontage, except for the entrance drives. Again, all this is done in an effort to meet the master plan. Utilities, in the existing condition, we're served by overhead electric, onsite septic, and onsite well-water. Proposed condition, again, it'll be overhead electric from utility poles in Randolph Road. We're proposing a well at the front of the building, and we have an area at the rear here, just by the tree line, that'll be dedicated for future septic.
Can I just, I don't mean to stop you, why overhead electric?
Just a matter of that's the way it is today. We can absolutely go underground. We're not paving the full width of Randolph Road, we're just doing out to the center line, so electric is across the street on overhead wires.
I recommend you review that with the utility company. I think all extensions have to be underground, so if it's a new connection point, I think it has to be underground.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, back to septic, I say future septic, you know, upon CFO for the building, there will be an approved and constructed septic system, but at this time, we haven't designed it. What we have provided here is an oversized area for the anticipated demand.
And that would, of course, be subject to board of health approval.
That's correct. The local board of health would have. Jurisdiction, we anticipate being below the NJDEP-TWA threshold for septic. Okay, so stormwater management, looking at the property today, the site actually acts as a sump or low spot for adjoining properties and Randolph Road. So we receive about three acres of, well, runoff from about three acres off-site on our property. So when we look at developing this property and coming up with stormwater management plan, we have to account for that, we can't just ignore it. So that is why, in previous iterations, you saw an excess of stormwater management systems underground. We're now, we have now revised that to be surface infiltration, and I'll get into that in a little bit. So what we're proposing for basins, and this is on the grading and drainage plan, which I have, this is actually the landscape sheet, but it indicates where the subsurface pipes are.
And what sheet number is that?
C400 in the set that was submitted most recently. So roof runoff is to be collected mostly underground. There's a small portion of the east side roof that will discharge at the surface and sheet flow across to the surface basin, but the majority of the roof runoff is to be collected and immediately discharged into a series of underground pipes. So on the east side, there's one long row of perforated pipe, and on the west side, there's a series of pipes that'll collect and infiltrate the roof runoff. We're proposing three surface basins. There's one at the front of the property, along the front of the building. That's really there to collect everything from Randolph Road that's coming towards our site. And then we have, on the east side in the JCPN right-of-way, we have two interconnected surface basins, and what their function to do is collect all runoff from all of the pavement areas. We have a series of inlets throughout the site. We also have where the loading bays are and moving east, we have all that runoff actually sheet flowing into those basins, so less structures, less maintenance, and the like. So our stormwater management design is complying with the township requirements, and while this specific project is not under the jurisdiction of the DEP for Stormwater Management Review, our proposed stormwater management is compliant with DEP standards. Okay, so now, back to A27, proposed parking, with the driveway realignment, we lost a few spaces, so now we're proposing 119 parking spaces. And that doesn't include the loading areas at the docks. So since the units are intended to function as warehouse spaces, we analyze the parking demand by separating what we think will be the maximum amount of office area in the building and the warehouse areas in our calculation. So office use is one per 300 square feet, and warehouse is one per 5,000. We're assuming a maximum of 20% of that floor area total will be office use, and the remainder will be warehouse. So therefore, the calculated demand is 100 spaces, so in that regard, we're providing 19 extra.
Now, as it relates to the 20%, the applicant would agree as a condition of approval to limit the number of, the percentage of office space to 20%? Is that correct?
Yes, and I believe that came up initially in February of 2017.
And other, just two follow-ups. There'll be no retail and no industrial, no manufacturing, no, no retail, let's limit it.
No retail, that was, yeah, that was the guidance, yep.
Okay.
So the layout provides circulation around the building for emergency vehicles. In the plan set, there are two circulation plans, one for a tractor-trailer, which shows where the furthest bay in the site that actually it can access, and the other one is, models the township's largest fire truck, and circulation around the entire building. Again, we provide the minimum 30 feet required on the entire site. For refuse, on the northwest corner of the area of work, we're providing a 10-by-30 refuse enclosure with some landscaping around it. This will be for refuse and recyclables, and the enclosure's in a location that really will be invisible from the right-of-way. It's setback about 500 feet, and there's a series of trees and a bunch of landscaping in front of it. So lighting, there is a lighting plan, I don't want to reference it because it'll be tough to read up here, but what we have, all pavement and sidewalk areas within the proposed development are lit to levels that are safe and adequate. We are limited on our site by the JCPN right-of-way. So they have specific standards for how tall certain structures can be, specifically lighting and landscaping. So their maximum fixture height is 12 feet for a freestanding pole. So we have 12-foot maximum poles on the opposite side, on the west side of this pavement area. In order to get adequate lighting in the middle of this pavement surface, we have a series of building-mounted lights, and they're up high, they're up at 30 feet tall. So we really rely on those building-mounted lights heavily. All the lights proposed for the site are LED with a temperature of 4,000 Kelvin, which is a white color when you look at it. Landscaping, we have, like I said, much of the site outside of the JCPN right-of-way is lightly wooded. We're proposing to remove two and a half acres of that wooded area and several isolated trees a little closer to Randolph. trees a little closer to Randolph Road. Everything within the riparian zone on the north side is to remain as is. We cannot touch that. We've consulted with the board's professionals to confirm what we're doing and what we need to do to compensate the township for tree removal. Based on our calculation and the updated plans for tree removal, the applicant will be providing compensation in the sum of about $81,500 for that tree removal. We're proposing 21 shade trees along the western property line, that driveway, and then along Randolph Road, seven of which are meant to function as tree trees along Randolph Road. We can't provide any trees in the JCPN L right-of-way. They have a maximum planting height of three feet. In addition, we have several, actually many shrubs throughout the property on the parking islands at the entrances, again, to soften up the proposed site features. For signs, we have, like I said previously, at the southwest corner, we have one ground-mounted sign. It's to be fully conforming. We have 10-foot setback on it, seven feet clearance from grade, and the maximum sign area allowed in the zone is 60 square feet.
And there'll be no building-mounted signage?
No building-mounted signage is proposed. So getting into design waivers, the average lighting intensity is one of them. So when I was discussing lighting, we have some serious JCPN L limitations, specifically with the fixture height. So the shorter the fixture, the more intense that light gets underneath. We feel due to those JCPN L limitations, greater spread is required, making this, achieving the average lighting intensity, difficult for the site. The refuse area landscaping, technically, we need a design waiver. We are proposing trees and shrubs around it. It is very close to the property line, but we feel it's adequately screened for the proposed use. One of the other design waivers is landscaping between the building and parking areas. Due to the site constraints and limited space we have, we do not propose landscaping between the parking on the north side and the west side and the building. So what we have here is a six-foot-wide sidewalk between the curb and the building, and the building itself will have pilasters and will have a decorative architectural finish. In our opinion, that is a way to soften up and satisfy that design waiver. Another one is sidewalk along the entire frontage. We're located in the SED zone, and this section of Randolph Road does not experience pedestrian foot traffic, so therefore, we feel sidewalk is not necessary for the development. One other design waiver is the architectural standard with roofline offsets and the facade. So we have no facade interruptions proposed on the loading bay side of the building, the east side, and that's a matter of functionality. When you have a series of loading bays, to have facade changes is not very functional and impacts the building construction. We do provide those facade interruptions on all the three sides, specifically the side that's facing the public on Randolph Road. Roofline offsets are also not functional for this type of building, but we feel with the parapet along the Randolph Road frontage that we have met the intent of that specific requirement in the ordinance. And one other thing to touch upon, in the February hearing of last year, since then, the building design has changed slightly in that the parapets have gotten shorter. That was a comment by former Mayor Gatto about fire access and actually climbing over the parapets. Not a sensible proposal, so we lowered the parapets and actually eliminated them on some areas on the west side of the building. Okay, so now I'll go through the proposed variances, and we have one. It's front yard setback. So we're proposing 27.25 feet where 60 feet is required. I'll start by saying this is an unusual situation. The very first iteration and submission that we made, we were actually fully conforming because we didn't have the proposed 30-foot right-of-way dedication. We've since changed the plans to provide that 30 feet in accordance with the township master plan, and we now propose the three-by-three pilasters that you see on the building to enhance the architectural nature of the building. So considering the 30 feet and then that, those pilasters, that's where we are with our front yard setback. The building distance from the traveled way has not changed since day one, but technically, this variance has been created. So I feel that this variance qualifies as a C-1 hardship for the applicant, and I'll explain why. I have an exhibit, this is, I believe it's A-15, let me just confirm. Yeah, A-15. And I know the board hasn't seen this in a while, so I'll describe it again. This is the original site survey with two hatched areas on it. So what this represents is the areas that are constraining the proposed development. So you'll see there's a green hatched area at the rear. This is our environmental constraints. This is where we cannot develop, the state won't let us, and there's certain areas even within that that the township wouldn't let us do anything in. The blue all the way across here is the JCPN L right-of-way. So we lost the 30-foot strip along the front for the right-of-way dedication. We lost the 200-foot JCPN L right-of-way, and we have to stay outside of the environmental area. And of course, we have the zoning setbacks of the SED zone, so I have those shown on here as well. So the only unhatched area is here, and that's really generally where our building fits within. So as a result of all the constraints on this map on A-15, the site that's 12.2 acres today is reduced to about three, by about three-quarters to only 2.9 acres of buildable area. So for some perspective, without any constraints, we'd be allowed to construct over 350,000 square feet of impervious area on the property. But we're not. Right now, we're proposing 100,000 square feet less than that. So while I feel the C-1 argument is appropriate here because we are heavily constrained and by existing easements and by environmental constraints, I'm going to also evaluate the front yard setback as a flexible C-2 variance. So as I stated before, the distance from the building to the traveled way in Randolph Road has not been changed, and the initial submission had a conforming front yard setback. The modifications done to the application to address the township master plan suggestions, which are the dedication and the widening of Randolph Road and the architectural standards, create the variance condition. The application furthers the purposes of planning. This is an appropriate use in development. This is a permitted use, and it's a reasonably sized building for the property. The applicant has worked within the unique constraints of the site to provide a design that's functional and aesthetically pleasing to the greatest extent practical. The application secures safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural man-made disasters. The building here will be designed and constructed to the latest building codes, making it a safer condition. Adequate emergency vehicle access around the perimeter of the building is also provided. The application provides adequate light air and open space. By virtue of the site constraints with the site, also the zoning setbacks, open space and vegetation is preserved on three-quarters of the property. The application provides a desirable visual environment. We have a building design that's attractive and meets the intent of the architectural standards of the ordinance. The applicant's proposing more landscaping than what is required, which is one tree and one shrub per 10 spaces, based on what we're proposing for parking. Much of the property and much of the, actually, all of the restricted areas will remain vegetated as they are today. I feel this application will conserve property values of the other industrial properties in the zone by providing a new development. In my opinion, the proposed development would not cause substantial detriment to the public good. I'll reiterate the fact that the location of the building hasn't changed since day one of the project. It's the same distance from the travel lane of Randolph Road as it was on day one. The building itself, and we're allowed 45 feet of building height, is actually seven feet shorter than the maximum permitted. This lessens the perceived mass of the structure from the roadway and mitigates that effect of not meeting the front yard setback, so I feel that's important. The applicant here is offering a high-demand space for future tenants. This can attract new businesses to the township, thereby increasing ratables. This can be viewed as a positive for the township and the public. The proposed development does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning plan, so nearly all of the proposed development conforms to the ordinance bulk requirements. The proposed use is permitted in the zone, and this is what the township wanted as it laid out the ordinance in the master plan, specifically for the SED area. The applicant's dedicating 30 feet of his property to Randolph Road and its right-of-way while also widening the road, adding curb and repaving along the entire property's frontage. This absolutely meets the intent and purpose of the master plan, which explicitly mentions right-of-way widening and road improvements. So on balance, it's my opinion that the benefits of the application substantially weigh its detriments, if any, giving you the ability to prove this application with confidence.
You had an opportunity to meet with the fire official sometime prior to the last hearing. Can you just summarize for the board what changes were made to address the fire official's comments?
Yes, and the big one, which we, they stuck to their guns on, rightfully so, was the 30-foot-wide aisle width going around the site. They had issue with the traveling between the towers, which we've rectified, so we don't have that as a design waiver anymore. One of the other items mentioned by the board members at our very first meeting was the parapet height and access to the roof for fire equipment. We've rectified that with the revised architectural plans. And then the other one was fire suppression. So as I mentioned earlier, the site is going to be served by well water because there is no water main in Randolph Road at this location. So with that, the question becomes, well, how do you sprinkler the building like this? Because it has to be sprinkled. We met, before meeting with the Fire Bureau, we met with a fire suppression engineer, and we were brainstorming a few ways to actually address fire suppression. So what, in a situation like this where you have well water, what you need to have is a storage area for a certain thousands of gallons of water. I think in this case, we need about 50,000 or 60,000 gallons of water. There's a couple ways you could do it. You can have tanks outside of the building above grade, which is not an option for us here, but can be for a more open site. We could put tanks underground outside the building. Or what the fire suppression engineer actually suggested, which is a, what he said was a new trend, is building it below the building slab. So he equated it to almost building a swimming pool underneath the slab. Obviously, it would have to be designed by a structural engineer and also the fire suppression engineer, and that would be filled.
Who's your fire suppression consultant?
I don't have the name off the top of my head. It's not in my office. I have, I can provide that. I just don't have the name. It was over a year ago. What you would do is you'd have an area that can support that amount of gallons. You would have an external pumping area, because in order to fill that, it has to be pumped by a truck or something like that. And then what the well system does would refill on small occasions, or if the system has to be used, it would be refilled again by an external means. So there is a way we could do fire suppression for this building this size, on this site. So those were the changes.
And we need to discuss the CME report. There were a few comments that we need to address.
Okay.
And if we refer to the report, February 28th, page four, items for, 4A, again, and the board, we've been through this many times. We do not have tenants at this point, so we don't have numbers of employees, types of uses, et cetera, other than to say that we're going to limit the office space to no more than 20%. The uses will be permitted in the zone, and that's really all we could say at this point as it relates to the uses. Item B just asks about industrial uses. Patrick, could you comment on that?
If I could, Sal, just, Patrick did a really good job of hitting most of these in direct. I think I have, everything was addressed with the exception of a barrier around the stormwater basin.
And that's been a continuing comment and a good one. What we have in our, excuse me, my throat's getting dry. Our latest iteration is the basin along Randolph Road, I think in the last revision was about three feet deep. Now it's deeper, so I think it would be inappropriate to say that we don't need a fence. So I think some sort of vehicle barrier, I mean, even a split-rail fence just to create a visual barrier there. It has, the basin up front has three-to-one slope, so it's not an incredibly steep slope, but it is deeper than it was previously, so if it satisfies the board and Ms. Newman, we would be happy to provide a fence around that front basin.
And there were also technical comments in the report, and you've indicated to me that you would address all of those comments.
Yes, nothing, no issue with any of them. We would address them as a condition of any approval.
That's all we have of Mr. Ward.
Thank you. Do we want to open it to the professionals and get any comment the professionals may have?
If I could, the one thing, I thought actually the applicant's engineer did a really nice job of going point-by-point through this to at least get the direct of the report. The one concern I have is the adequacy of that refuse area to service the units. In addition, as was noted, it's about 500 feet back, so that first unit, it's a walk to get there, and I just want to make sure we don't end up with this use and then dumpsters all over the place.
And I agree with that. That was considered, and I went over initial, it was very, very early on in the project with the applicant, about where can we have this refuse. We can't put it in the JCPN L right-of-way. I told him that right off the bat. We don't have room up front. We don't want it closer to the right-of-way. That seemed to be the logical fit. I understand the operational limitations with that. What he replied with, with this, when I told him that we'd have issues with length of, whatever it is, pushing garbage cans, whatever, he would enforce that in the lease. That was the feedback I had from him. I understand the comments. What we have now is now a little more room on the east side of the building, not to suggest that we put refuse enclosures at each bay, but we have room over there if that was another viable option. From day one, we never had that room. We were right up against that JCPN L right-of-way. Now we have 10 feet. So what we can do as an alternative is for each individual unit, maybe provide a small enclosure area that on a day-to-day basis would serve each unit, and then at the end of it for collection, we'd have to take it to the refuse enclosure. I don't know if that's a better solution. Visually, I think there's staircases in the way. There's a lot of things in the way that would.
Why don't we just make it so that if the tenant needs extra refuse, they're going to have to figure out how to carve out space internal in their space to develop that refuse container?
Well, again, as long as you state it like that. What ends up happening on most of these is that dumpsters just show up and they start to be in the drive aisle. So I'm happy with it's to stay this way and to be enforced by lease so that in the event the township had a future problem or complaints that dumpsters were out there, because a lot of times when you put it upon tenants to find room, they don't put it in their building, they put it out on the pavement.
Right.
Yeah, I think in the building is a good solution, and I would agree with Ms. Newman. It's an enforcement issue.
Okay. Any other questions from the professionals?
I don't know the question for Mr. Ward or for Mr. Alfieri. Sal, during the testimony, Mr. Ward agreed to a stipulation that there would be no building-mounted signage, but how does that square with a multi-tenanted loading bay where you have to at least have placards identifying which bay belongs which tenant? Just if the board were to approve this, how would you clarify that so that we don't bar you from at least identifying the bays?
My immediate thought is, on the loading bay side, they'd be numbered rather than identifying a certain name of a company, so a delivery person or even an employee would know where to go. On the opposite side, where the man door entrances are, I would say each unit would have a certain number to it as well. I don't know if any sign just proposed at that time, but I think if, right now, we're only permitted one sign, and the applicant has chosen to do a ground-mounted sign in the front for visibility, if that changes, we'd have to see a variance relief for any additional signage that doesn't comply.
And I'm not sure if a tenant identification sign on their door counts as a building-mounted sign, but we could certainly put the tenant's name on each door, which I think would solve most issues.
I believe that would be like a window, yeah, like a window sign or something along those lines for more of a commercial use.
Okay, we'll open it up for questions. I know I had a question in regards to how the fire department was going to fight a fire at this building, and I had a brief conversation with former Mayor Gatto about it before this meeting, and I'd like him to provide any comment that he may have since it is in his district.
So, my voice is going, so I don't know how long I'll be able to last, but first of all, thank you for your very clear and concise report. It was probably one of the best that we've had here. The things that you have designed and controlled in the comments that you've made were very clear and concise. As a board member, and I have to be careful not to offer testimony, but I just want to say that virtually everything that you said, because it happens to be my profession, everything you said about the protection of the building is, cannot be true. So I'm seriously questioning how you can build this building with the way you've presented it and be able to protect it according to code just based on water supply. The idea of being able to put something... The idea of being able to put something underneath a slab and be able to have that filled with existing well pumps and to do that to the capacity that you need, it's, I'm just going to say that 50,000 gallons is not the right number. You're not even close.
Just to, it would not be filled by the well pump. It would have to be an external pumper truck or something to fill something like that.
Yeah, that's not how, and again, I don't want to offer testimony. That's not how firefighting works. Firefighting works is you have a fixed system and that's in place, and it's expected that fixed system handles the fire. That's how sprinklers work. So the idea that the fire department would respond and continue to fill that tank, that...
I think there's a miscommunication there. So, the building itself would have its own fire suppression system. So if the fire department was called, they would not be relying on any water supply in the building. That would be feeding the sprinkler system throughout the building. So there would be no filling by the fire company or anything like that. If in the event of an emergency where that suppression system, this is again, this is all coming from the engineer we had met with. If there was a situation where that system was active and running, that reservoir would drain out to some degree, full or not. What would have to happen is that well cannot, and I agree with you, cannot, even if we had 10 wells, that's not, that's not going to work. So what would have, there would be external means of delivering water to the site and filling that reservoir, again, post-emergency. The fire suppression system would be, I would imagine it would have alarms on it that would indicate if that reservoir was below a certain, you know, I would say, in my opinion, like 95 percent or something, whatever that level needs to be.
Let me try to help you out. The only way you can do that is to put an outside pump and tank, and we had these conversations before. So, based on the volume of water that you're going to need to adequately protect this, you're not going to be able to do it the way you just described. And there's no way you can do that without putting at least 100,000 gallon grade-level tank with a fire pump that would supply the sprinklers in the building. It's the only way you're going to be able to do it.
Is there not, is there not water service on 547?
There's not.
There's nothing in the area?
There's not, there's not water, let me put it this way, there's not water service that we can tap into.
That's correct.
Yeah.
There's a newly installed bulk main that nobody's allowed to connect to.
Oh, but it's not available.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, what we could do is we can bring in a fire suppression engineer to, that's not my expertise, and I don't want to...
I get it.
... creating illusions. It was just, we had meetings before, well, as a result of the first planning board meeting for the application, where we were tasked to, one, resolve the comments that the board brought up, but also to meet with the Fire Bureau. We didn't want to meet with the Fire Bureau without having our information handy, so...
I get it. And I know at some point, if you get approval from us, you're going to be required to have to go and put the protection in, and that's going to be handled in the right way, so it's not my job to question that. Other than based on the comments that you made and offered to the board that there would be some below slab capacity pool or tank, that's not going to happen. I've been doing this for 35 years and I've never seen that.
That's right. I appreciate the feedback.
No, no problem. So however, knowing that and knowing that we don't have those details of how well the building will be protected, other than the fact that we're relying on it being protected, I'm struggling with the whole fire safety plan here. Everything from access to, and again, you know that I am a fire chief in this district, so I know the property very well. I know what our capabilities are. I know what the size of our equipment is. I know what the size of the equipment is for the neighboring communities that would be asked to help us. So I'm looking at all of that, and honestly, I'm really struggling with every aspect of this. Everything from access to the building on multiple sides, the issues with the, these parapits that I thought were going to be not so much of an issue, but now because of that design of where the towers are, I think, I think I have another issue. So, I guess I'm not really sure where to start. I can pick and kind of go through these if you want, and I don't want to pirate this whole meeting here, but...
Well, means it. I think it's important.
Okay.
I have a lot of concerns myself about fire protection of the building.
There's a couple of things that I just don't see that make sense from a fire protection and means-of-egress standpoint for large equipment like fire trucks. I understand and I can appreciate that you probably used a template for a 35-foot-long fire truck, and that's what the design is. Our vehicles are bigger than 35 feet, by the way, but I don't think that matters. If we had to get there, we'll get there, and I don't think the seven feet is the issue. I have a lot of issues with accessing emergency vehicles on either one of those driveways with and without the parking. I have a lot of concerns about how fire apparatus would get in and out of the building, given the dynamics of those loading docks being, I think that's going to be a pretty busy area there, and I think that the main point of access would be the Easterly driveway. Between the parking, between the loading docks and that limited opening that I see there, I think that's going to be a very difficult entrance just to get equipment in there. The other one that I'm very surprised about is, is the access around the monopole and the lattice tower. I think previously you had a cut-through, and I think the concern that I had at the time was the way the cut-through was designed, that it was still very close to the base of the lattice. I didn't feel comfortable with vehicles physically going through that opening like that. And I see that's been alleviated with some kind of configuration, and in my mind, I can come up with 100 different reasons why that configuration isn't going to work, and most of them could be just a single car or a vehicle that's parked anywhere near that, and a fire truck is not getting through. You can stripe it, you can deed-restrict those two bays, you can do everything with every good intent that you want to do. The reality is, is nobody in this room and nobody in that building is going to control an oversized vehicle going in or out of either one of those two bays, just like we can't control a car that's going to park at the end of that little circle by the monopole. So if any of those things happen, that whole side of that building would not be accessible for fire apparatus. That's just a fact. I don't know that we can design to it. I think these are more issues that have to do with the size of the building and what you've actually proposed, and I think it's the size of the building that's actually creating that limitation. I have a lot of concerns about what's actually on those JCPN L lines. I don't believe the monopole is strung yet. I don't think it's got wires on it yet. Do you know what the height of the lowest wire on the lattice tower is right now?
The curve of the wire? I do not have that information.
Okay. Again, I'm just kind of visualizing it because I know the site. I think it would be almost impossible for us to be able to use any aerial device to get on that roof at all just because of the presence of those wires. I know I wouldn't want to be the guy on that ladder that's near that wire doing that. So, I, to me, that entire east side of the property is not conducive to firefighting in any way, shape, or form for the reasons that I expressed. So that leaves me the back, the west side, and the front. The front winds up being almost useless to me. We can't get on the roof from the front because of the parapet. So, something that I didn't think was all that important previously, I think is more important now. So, I think I was the one who asked to restrict the parapets, and I said at the time I didn't really care about what happened on Randolph Road. Now I do, and I do because of what I think is the problem on the east side. So that leaves me really with the west side of the property, and quite honestly, there's just not much room there. So, I just struggle with, if there was some type of major event there, even with sprinklers controlling a fire, if the sprinklers were designed right, I just don't know how we would be able to get to this building and do normal firefighting operations. I just, I don't see it. I just think it's, I think the building is too big for the site. I think the entrances and exits are too tight. I think the restrictions that you have from the JCPN L equipment that, again, aren't your fault other than the fact that you chose the site, I just, I don't, I can't even imagine how we would respond to this building.
Mayor Gatto, when you fight a fire, are you looking to actually get on top of this roof with someone?
Yes. You have to. Yeah, so...
If I could make a possible recommendation, sometimes I have seen, not in this jurisdiction, but actually in another state, where the fire department would get a proper dedicated fire-rated stairwell that would lead directly from the outside to the roof so that you could get proper access to the roof, and it may be a corridor that has to be into the middle of the roof space if need be.
Yeah.
I didn't know if anything like that would alleviate...
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, and I'm not saying that's not possible to do. It wouldn't be ideal. It would require a significant amount of effort and understanding, and I think that's really what my concern is. We do a really good job with pre-planning all of our industrial buildings in our district, just like happens throughout Howell, and I think under the best of scenarios, even if we were to have some other way of getting to the roof, whether that be inside or outside stairwell, it's just a little more than that because even to do that, you still have to get the apparatus close to get near where that stairwell would be, and I just don't see how that's going to happen. I just, I, I just, I just have a lot of concerns, probably more so on any application than I've ever seen before since I've been here. I really have a concern for the safety of the building, and that, and I don't, I don't want to express that as a, like, you guys didn't know what you were doing, but, but I can't even begin to consider to approve this, just me personally, unless I was able to have an extensive review of this from a fire professional who would be willing to put testimony on the record.
Speaking of fire professionals, what do the Fire Bureau have to say about this, the plans?
I see that there was a report...
He made the comment about the sprinkler protection, that the assumption was that it needed to be sprinkled, but it didn't provide any of the details, and he, it probably wouldn't be appropriate for him to do that because he wouldn't have had, he wouldn't have had the fire rating, the occupancy load, the details of the protection, and all of those things tie into physically how much water you need to store on-site. So it probably would have been premature for the fire subcode official to even begin to address some of the things that I brought up, and quite honestly, I only brought them up because I just happen to know it because it's what I do. So, I, I mean, I think from his standpoint though, I mean, if a template shows that a fire truck can make that turn, he probably would say that's okay. I'm just saying I'm not sure that I would have to agree with that just based on 100 things I could see go wrong there.
Former Mayor Gatto, there's one comment you mentioned. We receive the appropriate spec for the largest fire truck in town, so you mentioned a 35-foot-long. In my opinion, based on what the Fire Bureau provided us, the fire template that you see in the plans is based on that, that large fire apparatus. Just so, just to clarify, that's all.
And the applicant has no problem bringing a fire professional to a subsequent hearing and allowing him to provide testimony, and based on your comments, if it requires some plan revisions between now and then, we would consider that certainly.
Would it make sense that the local battalion meet with the applicant, or the applicant meet with the local battalion to discuss the fire suppression plan since they have to fight it?
We have, we have no problem. We would prefer doing that because at least we'll understand the, our professional will understand the concerns and try to address them.
I think it's probably a little goofy in this case because I probably would be the one that would be there, and I don't know if I could do that as a board member, so, I mean, we can handle that offline, but I would be welcome to that happening. I'm just, and again, I don't, I don't want to pirate this application, and we didn't even talk about a bunch of other things like traffic, but to me, this is a big enough issue that I, I would urge our board members to not even continue to go past this issue to go on to other issues until we felt a little more comfortable on these things. I just, I don't know how you're going to be able to do the things that you think that you can do, and I think that's going to be a major hurdle for you.
We, well, again, we will, we will consult with the fire professional that we originally retained and see if he, I don't know who it is, but to see if he's willing to come to a meeting and present his testimony. If not, we'll get another one and consult with him. I don't know if they're going to make additional suggestions based upon what you just said, Mr. Gatto. But if, we would like to be able to at least hear any other comments that the board has so we're not slowly being beat to death. If we get past that and then we find out there's another issue, we may as well deal with it if possible.
Okay. Do you want me to just keep going? Because I had...
Go ahead.
Sorry. So, I'm, I'm very concerned about the, that entire JCPN L equipment that's there. And first of all, I appreciate the efforts that you've taken to try to alleviate that. The idea of the driveway around it, I, I get that. But at the end of the day, it just appears that we have some pretty substantial equipment there that's really close to the building, and I don't see any drawing or I don't see any information, I don't see anything that tells me how close that that high voltage equipment is even physically located to the edge of that building. I don't, I don't know if you have to. I don't know what the rules are, how JCPN L mandates that. I mean, we're kind of taking your word that, you know, they're fine with it, but I don't, I don't know that. I don't see that. I don't, I don't have any letter from them. I don't, I don't have anything that says that they even know that this is going on. So, I think we need that. I mean, that, that just, that's just, that's really close.
Well, we always anticipated that if this were approved, one of the conditions of approval was that JCPN L would have to approve it as well because we are encroaching under some of the easement areas. So we know that we have to get a written document from them. The problem is, we don't want to get a document saying we approved this plan and then have to come back to you, and then you change it, and then we have to go back to them, and it's, so that would be certainly a condition of approval. But in response to your questions about more details, we can certainly get more detail for you.
Or at least find out if they have any written documentation and a standard of some sort, and if they do, at least provide that documentation to us and make that statement at your meeting that, those requirements.
Sure. They have general guidelines that we've started on day one with. We've had a dialogue with their transmission engineers, so we can provide that guideline document. I've had it for over a year and a half now. And then, you know, I've been trying to get some sort of at least preliminary approval out of them. They're resistant to give that until they see full building plans and all the other bells and whistles that come with a final construction draft.
Do you, do you have the ability to just show us where the overhead wires would physically be located? Are they, would they be over the building?
Oh, yeah, not at all. So, actually, on the projected image, it's going to be tough to point out, but, and this was surveyed, the edge of the, so the lattice tower, as you know, kind of tapers up towards a point at the top. The monopole itself, we'll take that out of the conversation for a moment. On the survey...
15 was the survey.
Yeah. So here's A15 again. You'll see two big lines, and this represents the limit of the overhead wires as field located by the survey area. So, in terms of distance to the building now, and again, we took eight feet off the building as, at the request of JCPN L.
So...
So they're going across the apartment line?
Yeah. So how...
So right now, it's 40 feet away.
So what is the eight feet requested by JCPN L?
They wanted a, so we were two feet off the right of way, just for construction tolerances. They wanted 10. And the reason for that was the erection of the building. So when they're putting up this type of building, you have steel and steel panels, they wanted a 10-foot, and it was a request. They don't have to necessarily make us do that because that's not their property, but that was a request of theirs.
10 feet horizontally away from...
Like a setback. A 10-foot setback from their right of way.
So you were two feet, so would it draw through those wires closer to the property edge? Am I missing?
No, the building. So, let me just find a, this is the better...
The building was eight feet wider.
Yeah, this way.
Okay.
So we took eight feet off this building line. So now, we have a 10-foot setback to the JCPN L right of way where previously we only had two.
Right of way meaning the wires.
They have a 200-foot wide right of way or easement on our property. That's, yeah.
If you guys want to look on the screen, I can see, so if you see where I'm pointing, that's the limit of the JCPN L right of way, which now has a 10... that's the limit of the JCPN right-of-way, which now has a 10-foot setback to the building. The overhead wires are in this vicinity forever.
And on the south side, or the west side of the X.
The wires are running this way.
Yep.
The limit of the JCPN easement is over here.
Right.
And this is the 10-foot setback that's been provided.
The tower's about 30 to 35 feet in the right-of-way from where that line is at.
So to kind of tie these two conversations together, then, I'm going to tell you, I'm never putting a fire truck there. It's not happening. The whole access to that whole side of that building and using an aerial device and all the things that we would do for fire protection and firefighting, it's not happening on this site. If you want to call that testimony, you can do that, but I would never do that. So that just made all of the other conversations that much more important. I, you're putting a building too close to a hazard that exists on the property that I just don't, I just don't think makes sense. I mean, if you want to continue and have more conversations about the other topics, I'm glad to do that. I'm here all night, but just me personally, I can't get past that.
I recommend that a site plan be developed that shows all the trucks parked in the loading docks, so you could see how close you could get your fire apparatus and where it would end up being in relationship to all those wires. So I agree with your concern, Mr. Gatto.
We don't have anything else like this in the town. We don't have any other buildings in this close proximity that these concerns would come up in. I think we're in a little bit of uncharted territory here, just to kind of take a little bit of slowdown and do this in steps.
There's got to be some type of setback from JCPN from a structure to a high-tension line. And, I mean, it's 50-foot is what I'm seeing on this map, from the building to the lattice tower?
Yeah, 40 feet.
40 feet.
You know.
The wires are up above.
I'm just hearing tonight that these lines are that close to the building. And what kind of health hazard is this to people that are working in the area there underneath those lines? Parking cars walking in the area? I just don't feel comfortable with that kind of electric over top their heads.
I can't comment on any of that. It's not my expertise whatsoever. I just know that those wires traverse public areas and public right-of-ways throughout town and throughout the counties.
And that's why there's nothing underneath them.
There's public sidewalks and streets in some areas.
But I mean, aside from former Mayor Gatto's points, something happens to the roof on that side of the building. You're not putting a boom up to repair that roof on that side of the building. So anything happens, I don't know how you do anything.
Yeah.
Because that'll jump like that.
You mean, if you had to bring a big tow truck in to pull out a rig, that thing sticks up, and you're going to arc that wire?
Well, I think that it was testimony that they're going to provide data of how the wires are going to sag on the hottest day. You know, the worst-case scenario of where the wires would be above grade, that affairs.
Well, we'll try, so the three transmission engineers there at JCPN, I'll try to get that information from them. If we can, we will request permission for us to send a survey crew to attempt to measure that visually.
These are high voltage.
They're transmission wires, correct.
You know, and of course, if there were homes adjacent to that, you'd have 50 people here. This is a controversial topic. It's not definitively cleared whether or not this is a health hazard or not. There's two complete opposite thoughts about people underneath a high-voltage line. You can see of all the controversy that this transmission line from Red Bank to through Home Del, if you've followed that, this has been going on for the last two years, controversy along the right-of-way of the railroad tracks that you have adjacent homes. Of course, they're not adjacent homes, but you do have people sitting in offices there. That was an important topic.
I'd be cautious about having the surveyor do the estimate of how height those wires are.
It would be visual only. They'd use their equipment.
My only concern would be is, we're not at the peak summer, so the wires are going to sag more when it's hot and there's a lot of electricity running through them. That's typically, you want to make sure that you get that peak sag.
And we'll try to get JCPN to provide that information.
That's going to have to be JCPN, unfortunately.
Yeah. I would imagine, I would hope that they would have something that they can offer for the exact location and the design of that. We'll try them first.
I respectfully request that you bring in somebody to offer some testimony about the overall safety of a building being this close to that equipment, whether that means physical contact, electrical radiation, whatever health hazard that a member of the public would want to question. I think you need to have that person here to answer those questions.
So we got fire suppression, health hazards.
So if you, if you want to continue on some other things, there was a review letter by the Director of Community Development. And I won't call it up, but some of those items, I know you've addressed. Other items, I didn't really hear. The ones that were the most important to me is, I was reading it earlier tonight and while you were talking, I was looking to see if you were going to mention any of them. He talked about traffic. He talked about access out of the facility and a restriction to travel in an easterly direction. There were quite a few people that were here before. There was an objector that obviously is not an objector anymore, but I believe that was one of the comments they put in the record. Mr. Herman had some concerns about traffic relative to the stability of the road on Randolph Road towards 547, what the road was constructed of, what its service life was, a bunch of those issues. He made reference, and the letter was dated, but he made reference of a traffic control device at that intersection. I think because of current events in this area, I think that probably has a new heightened sense of awareness because of an application, I'll call it, for something going on across the street from this site that is not within this board's jurisdiction. But part of that may or may not include a traffic control device. So I offer that because it was referenced in Mr. Herman's letter. I mean, I think that would be a pretty extensive conversation to have just on traffic and traffic flow and serviceability and.
We have, we do have a traffic engineer. We won't, at this point, we're not going to get to him tonight. And we obviously understand that off-site traffic conditions, although they're not grounds for denial of an application, the applicant would be required to contribute its fair share of costs of any off-site traffic improvements, including a traffic signal if someone were to install it.
Okay.
And we would agree, obviously, to consider whatever that fair share determination is ultimately calculated at. But we will present traffic testimony.
I mean, that was all of the concerns I had. I was satisfied with the environmental issues. I reviewed all of the comments from the professionals, as well as the various groups that have reviewed this. I didn't see anything that stuck out that wasn't addressed.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
Just one minor point. When you're giving testimony as to the benefit of this, and you mentioned ratables, I just want you to understand that ratables have no purpose to this board. We can't consider ratables when we're going to consider approval of this application. I just want, just so you know. May be true, but it doesn't.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. I mean, one of the questions I had for our counselor was, there was testimony given to the C1 and C2 hardships. Do you have any counter testimony? Do you agree that the hardships that were put on the record are valid? They make sense?
The proofs that he put on?
Yeah.
For the variance that he was asking for, I'm sorry.
I have no questions. I mean, that's his testimony. That's what he's arguing that.
Okay.
I didn't hear much, and by the way, on the C2, what the planning benefits were as compared to that. It was just a statement that he thinks the C2 applies. But as to the hardship, he did identify environmental constraints and the easement constraints. So he made an argument that those hardships, in his opinion, would satisfy the variance. But I have no questions for you.
And, yeah, I understand the environmental constraints on site. However, I think the building size is really what's driving the variance, which is more along the lines of a C2. But I think most, if not all, the variance criteria, the proofs were provided either directly in the statements following the identification of the variance or otherwise throughout the testimony. Actually, I have a couple of quick questions.
Go ahead.
Let's see here. One of the questions I had that actually ties back to the requested front yard variance, did you have a chance to look at the setbacks of adjacent properties to the east and west of this site?
No, we did not take inventory with a survey to check those front yard setbacks.
Okay. Because that's something, I'm just curious if, for next time, if you could provide some testimony, just to see how on the streetscape as you're driving down, what the appearance of it would be in character.
Sure.
Do you have any plans for a generator now or in the future?
At this time, none proposed. I can't dictate whether there will be a generator or not in the future.
Okay. And then the last one I have, just real quick, and I'm sorry if this was already covered at a prior meeting, but will there be any wayfinding signage for truck traffic, for the truck entrance versus the other entrance?
I would say yes. And there, actually, towards the rear of the site on the north side, there are some identification signs for restricting certain trucks through the northeast corner of the property. Wayfind, yeah, I would actually agree with that question comment. I think at the entrance, specifically the east side, that would be trucks only, or, excuse me, not trucks only, that is the truck entrance, I should say.
Right.
And then on the west side, no trucks. I believe we have signage proposed on that west entrance for no trucks.
Okay. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Just one quick question. You mentioned before fencing around the basin. Can you just elaborate on that? You said, how high is the fence? And is it a chain-link fence?
The basin.
You think you'd recommend a split rail?
Yeah, as a visual buffer. It's going to be curbed out there. The fence would actually probably be set back off of the municipal right-of-way, including the new dedication. I think a split-rail fence with, you know, no-climb wiring or chicken wire in it would be appropriate here. I don't think a chain-link fence would be an aesthetically pleasing solution, and it really wouldn't serve any substantial, you know, asset over a split-rail fence or something like that.
And how high is the fence?
I would suggest four feet. Again, just more of a visual barrier, so they don't think there's nothing going on there. I mean, the building will be, you know, another 25 feet back from that, so that'll be another, you know, visual barrier. And there's landscaping throughout there. Street trees, as you'll see, at the top, upper slope of the basin, so the fence would, I would suggest either immediately behind those trees or immediately in front.
Actually, could I recommend that the trees be put in front of the fence? I don't know how you guys feel about it, but as far as aesthetics go, I think it looks nicer than the fence. I mean, I don't know. I don't know.
It's fine. Anybody else?
I have a question about, and I don't want to go through this whole definition of flex space again. You've addressed that to, I think, the full extent that you're able to. But you did say some things that it wouldn't be. And you put a limit on, you said, no retail. And you said that you would stipulate to the maximum 20% office space. Without going through the whole litany of occupancies and that whole conversation we've had on numerous occasions, I guess the question is really for our professionals. Is there an occupancy here that you could envision that would fit within the agreed-to definition of flex space that would have a negative impact on required number of parking spots?
Well, I think the answer is yes. I mean, the basis of this has been 20% office, and the balance of which is warehouse. If they went with a different permitted use, the parking standards would be different. But I think it would be governed as they were coming in by tenants, so I don't think you could have a use in here if it didn't fit. I mean, my recommendation would be that the board hold 20% office, the balance of which be warehouse space. And if there's a deviation from that, then I think they should come back for an amended site plan for that use. So, for example, and again, I think we allow recreation in SED zone. So, again, if a recreational use wants to come in here, that's not in the guidelines of the testimony I heard this evening. I heard 20% office, balanced warehouse, no retail, no manufacturing. So if a recreational use were to come here, I think they have to come back to the board for an amended site plan, because just as you had indicated, the parking standards for that are different.
Ms. Newman, they just, they did clarify only, no retail. They did say industrial, possible industrial.
They said no manufacturing.
That was listed.
Laura, I've seen hobby shops where people come in with dozens of children doing modeling, clay work. That would impact a tremendous amount of parking if that is allowed. Would that be allowed in a flex space to have a recreation or a hobby area where people could come and bring their children and?
If I could, I believe the use is permitted. However, based upon the testimony I've heard, if they wanted to move forward with a use like that, we haven't heard that testimony, so they'd have to come back for an amended site plan.
And, go ahead, Laura.
You know, I see this as strictly an office with the warehouse component. So if a recreational use was a potential tenant, they'd have to come back to the board for an amended site plan.
That would require, that's a completely different parking standard, as is manufacturing. Manufacturing is one per 800, I think. Warehouse is one per 5,000. We base ours at 80% at one per 5,000. So we don't have adequate parking for those more intense uses.
So we heard no retail, but you were hesitant to say that there wasn't going to be manufacturing.
Well, in Ms. Newman's report, she does ask that question, because that does have a different parking standard. I think she, I think you referenced 800, right, Laura?
Yes, it's for industrial use.
Right, that's a 4B. And we, the testimony was, we only are providing one space per 5,000 square feet for warehouse, so there can't be manufacturing based on this parking.
Okay, so is industrial use outside of that? Like, is that a completely different use than manufacturing?
From a parking standard, they're similar. Industrial and the ordinance is one per 800, and I think in manufacturing is the same. I did a quick math before beginning the meeting. I think at a one per 800, we're looking at 147 spaces.
So based upon this testimony, there will be no retail, no manufacturing, no industrial?
If I could, I think what the board should do is, if the board were to act favorably on the application, the board needs to set what it is. And I think what we've heard based upon testimony is strictly office and warehouse use. And anything that deviates from that should have to come back to the board because the parking standards are different. So based upon the plan you're seeing, it assumes 20% of an office set aside with a balance of warehouse. And I think that if the board were to act favorably, that should be the condition imposed.
Can we do that?
Understood.
You can, because at this point, they don't have tenants. So based upon the testimony that's been provided, it's based upon the assumption that it is an office with a warehouse component. And I say that to you in the fact that if we had a tenant that was recreational, it would certainly change a lot of the comments the board may have. It would change my comments. A recreational use has substantial traffic impacts, as well as there's a lot more interaction with the public. When you have. When you have these type, what I'm accustomed to is a flex space with an office and a warehouse, you don't have a lot of public coming to the site. It's typically, you know, for lack of a better term, sometimes it's like a plumber and he needs a little office and he needs storage for his, for his parts and stuff of that nature. So, that's what I'm used to when I think of a flex use, and so, to answer your question, yes, you can, in fact, impose that condition that, based upon the testimony they've provided and considering that there's no tenants, that this is what the approval is based upon.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about that. I saw a local shopping center, that one small store had one of these recreation hobby where they made ceramics or clay models, and it took the entire shopping center's parking to this one store, where another store there actually had to call the police.
Okay, well, it sounds like Fister out there. We're not asking for a parking variance so that the, the uses that we're going to install here, if ever approved and built, would have to meet the parking standard that we've described, which is one space for five thousand and then the twenty percent office, period, that's it. If there's another use that increases the parking demand, we'd have to come back.
Here, here's where I, I, I'm getting a little concerned or caught up. So, if, if we're gonna restrict the occupancy based on the one to eight hundred, and that gets us to the one forty-seven and we're all fine?
No, we're, we're lower, we're one to five thousand.
We're lower than that? Okay. Oh, all right.
Their assumption, twenty percent of the area that's office is at one per two hundred parking required, the balance of the building, so the eighty percent, is at one per five thousand.
Okay, but, so let's, maybe I'm not understanding what could potentially happen, so if I'm on the wrong track here, just stop me. So, we're talking about a warehouse, where a truck comes in, there's a limited number of people that work in that warehouse, they store things, they inbound them, and at some point, they outbound them with another truck. That's what, that's what a warehouse is to me.
Mm-hmm.
I'm also aware of other warehouses that exist in the town that aren't quite like that. There are pick pack operations, there are heavy material handling issues, breaking down, going from master cartons to small containers and then going on smaller vehicles. Fleets of people come in, fleets of people go out. All of that, to me, that's not a warehouse. So, would that definition still apply to a warehouse?
I think that's more of an industrial or a manufacturing type use if you're breaking things down and repackaging.
Okay, so, so then I'm, so then my concerns sound like they could be true, that, are we all on the same page with what a warehouse is? Right?
And I, I would defer to them, but my idea of what you define as a warehouse is, I can see if our ordinance has a specific definition. Can you give me two seconds?
There's, there, there's several buildings that are adjacent to this that I, I'm guessing, and I'm not trying to hold you to this, but I, I, I believe they would fit our definition of warehousing, and if you take a look and see the parking that's there, it's far more than you have provided here. So, if, if we're gonna do this based on the definition of warehouse, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that. If, if I'm gonna fill the thing with twenty-foot-high rack storage, that doesn't require a hundred people to work in the building. If I'm gonna put twelve-foot-high shelf storage for pick pack, that requires fifty people to be in that building per tenant, and if you're gonna call that warehousing, then I don't think that, that parking number is right.
Unfortunately, we don't define it.
Yes, so I...
I think operationally, they'll probably have to quantify exactly that.
And, and I know you don't have tenants now, and I know we can't even...
But I'll try and get a better definition of what that warehousing is. I, I don't know if we can, but we'll look at it.
Okay.
All right, any last calls? Okay. We're probably gonna need... Sounds like we're gonna have to come back? Yes, we're probably gonna need, I would say... But before we do that, do we want to open it up to the public so if anybody has any questions for this particular professional at this time? Yes? Okay. All right, we'll open up to the public for any questions they may have for Mr. Fister. Is this... I see that nobody has any questions, we'll close the public portion.
Just to further clarify, and so you could take this back, but I think we talk about assembly operations, which I think you're talking about, and more of the manufacturing, that's where I think you were going, and my definition, just so we could, you know, be clear for next time, warehousing to me is more of a storage-related component. Items come in, they may go out, they may be affiliated with the office use, but there's not a breakdown in that office of material to ship out or do anything like that, that's more of an assembly, I think, of what you're storing, so I think that that's what the applicant has to clarify. I'm assuming these warehouses are more storage-based, and they're typically storage-based associated with that smaller office component. So, other than that, I would consider the operation like you had spoken to to be more assembly or manufacturing, and that has a different parking standard.
Okay, we, we will, we will have a very specific definition for you as to what that means, some, I think, we'll try and have a very specific definition.
Okay. And I guess the, the last question about all of this is, if that was to change, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that having to keep reapplying to a board every time a tenant changes or a new tenant comes in, to me, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, that, that requires a lot of our time, it requires a lot of money from an applicant. Can any of that be handled by the conditionally exempt site plan review approval status?
I don't think it could, because it wouldn't comply, so if they were to come in with a different user that had a more intense parking standard and they couldn't meet the parking?
Yep.
It requires relief, which is why it would have to come to a board. If it did fully comply, if it was a user that fully complied and they had the parking allotment, then I think the answer is yes, as long as there's no relief, but you're also only allowed one conditionally exempt site plan per property in the township.
But if we're renting to tenants who meet the approval definition, it's just a CO process, there's no site plan required.
Correct, as long as there's no change, I think...
No change in the, yeah, I was worried that we would have continuous changes in occupancy.
Land use would deny it if they don't meet the requirements.
But, yeah, so, so as long as we meet the conditions, we would just get COs every time we rent.
Okay, all right, I tried.
Okay. We're gonna, in, in order to line up the two specific professionals you've asked for, the, the transmission line professional or JCPN L, P&amp;L rep if we can get one to come, and then the fire official, we, I would suggest a sixty-day carry of this application, I don't know where that puts us.
April nineteenth or May tenth? May tenth, May seventeenth, they're both open?
I'm open all those.
They all sound good to me, let me just check. Can you repeat those?
April twenty-sixth.
I have April nineteenth, May tenth, May seventeenth.
I can't do April nineteenth, so let's go to May.
May tenth or seventeenth?
May tenth.
Do you want to check with your traffic engineer?
They have enough people there, they could...
Somebody would be here, right?
We'll be fine with that. When is your whole office at? So, yes, if, if we can announce that the application's gonna be carried to the May tenth at seven PM without further notice, please?
And we just need an extension of time, Sal?
That's fine, you need a letter or...
Put it on the record?
The applicant grants an extension through the, uh, May thirty-first, just in case something happens on the tenth.
May tenth.
So, we're gonna make an announcement that application case number SP-ten-twenty-seven forty-one Randolph LLC is being carried on notice to the board's regularly scheduled meeting for May tenth, seven PM, this room, there'll be no further mail or newspaper notice, so forty-one Randolph LLC has been carried on notice, May tenth.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. We have a master plan status report update?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Vice Chair, we will have an update after our March twenty-second meeting. We're waiting to hear back from the council regarding budget issues.
Okay, thank you. Nick, do you want to give the green team report?
Pursuing recertification of sustainable jersey, we're due in June, pursuing having a farmer's market here in Howell for first time, as far as I remember, trying to get it here in the municipal building parking lot, so baby steps to getting it done.
Great. I was actually discussed at the...
That was brought up by me, chief, so...
Okay, any reason to go into executive session? Ellie? Yeah? Okay.
I don't have any.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.